Good morning and welcome to the August 8, 2019 business meeting. And I'd like to note that Commissioner Fisher is out today, but Commissioner Schrader's on her way in. Did somebody throw the flower buds? Just kidding. And we'll start off, I'll ask the county administrator Gary Schmidt to please take the role.
Yes, Chair, our staff support today is Stephen Madcor, County Council, Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board, roll call Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're still trying to figure out why all these people are here. Today, Gary, what, why are all these?
Let me tell you why all these people are here. We have two presentations today to honor and recognize our outstanding county employees. First is the Employee Spirit Awards presentation. Jackie Nersky from Disaster Management will present.
Thank you Administrator. I just want to say, welcome to the Spirit of Excellence Awards Ceremony. This is the seventh year that the A-Team has collaborated with HR to bring you the Awards of Excellence. The Spirit of Excellence Awards honors those that embody our core county values, spirit. In the past year, county employees submitted over 100 Spirit Awards to recognize excellence in their coworkers. Leadership committee members and the A-Team selected 10 of these Spirit nominations to receive the Spirit of Excellence Awards. And back to you Chair.
Great, so I'm not reading the names off, right?
Yeah, I'll do that right after you.
You know, every month or so, sometimes we skip months, we have employee recognition in which employee who's been here five, 10, 15, 20, and sometimes 35 years tells us about what they do. And the one thing I see, and we all see, is the love and caring they have for not only their jobs, the work they do, but the work that they do and the community, to help the community, and also to help the organization as a whole. And today, we're here to celebrate the compassion and understanding that these folks that will be named by somebody else, for the extra mile they've taken to make something happy, the ideas that they've offered, and the success they've brought to the county. I remember one, I think we actually talk about the smiley face button. You know, people walk out of the room, are they happy or sad with the work we did? And that's part of what we're going to talk about here in a bit, but it's really important that we have some feedback on whether we're doing a good job or not, because otherwise how do you ever improve? So today, these folks are being honored and were nominated by their own people, who they work with, for exemplifying Clackamas County's core values by their dedication, energy, and caring for our citizens. So Gary, I turn it over to you.
Thank you Chair Bernard. I just want to thank and recognize our outstanding county employees, all of our workforce, over 2,000 county employees, who serve the public every single day, and serve you Commissioners. You set the policy and vision for our organization, but you can't implement it yourself, and I can't myself either. We rely on a really talented workforce to do that. And today, we are honoring just a handful of our amazing county employees for the outstanding work that they do every day, and going beyond the call of duty, and how you serve and support not only your fellow employees, but members of the public. And the Spirit Awards is named after our county's core values, spirit, S-P-I-R-I-T, which let me just remind us all stands for service, professionalism, integrity, respect, individual accountability, and trust. All employees are asked to model our core values every day, and the individuals we recognize today have truly done that, which is why we support and thank them today for their service. So I'm very proud and grateful to work with all of you, and I thank you for all you do every day for the public of Clackamas County.
Thank you very much. This year, we've placed all of the submissions on the back table, so during the break, you're welcome to go and look and see what your county employees have done. During the break, you can do that. A special thank you goes out to all of our Spirit of Excellence Award winners from your county HR, as well as your A-Team, for all of your dedicated service to Clackamas County. We also want to recognize those that have taken the time for the nomination, as we wouldn't be able to recognize these individuals without your initiative to nominate them. At this time, I'm going to read your name and the department of each recipient. When you hear your name, please make your way over to Mary, where you receive your certificate. Once everybody's received their certificate and called up front, the board will come down and will take a picture. If I can have, so Suzanne Baumann from CCOM 911, she's actually not here, but we have Cheryl from CCOM that's going to accept her award. Then Tracy Nichols from CCOM 911. Shar Cash-McEntire from Human Resources. We have Stacy Davenport from Public and Government Affairs, who's actually not here, but we'll give her award to her later. Yay. Kim Brown from the Department of Transportation and Development from Dog Services. And I have Tamara Maxon here, I believe, to accept her award. Maybe not, but I do have a picture of her if she's not here. We have a picture with her dog.
That's good.
So we want to make sure she feels included. We have Glenn Hamburg from the Department of Transportation and Development, Land Use and Development. Cindy Garcia from H3S Social Services. Stephanie Spidele from H3S Health Center, School-Based Health Center. Callie Colette from H3S Health Centers. And last but not least, Kevin Ko from H3S Housing and Community Development. Thank you very much.
All right, well, I again want to thank you for the hard work you do and the passion you give to the work you do. And you know, if I had an opportunity right now to hand out our Two Spirit Awards, since we only have two employees that actually are our employees, I'd have to mention Stephen Madcor and his hard work, and Gary Schmidt, who's five and a half months now as the Administrator. So thank you for your work, and we'll make sure you get one of those awards here soon. So let's go ahead and join us up front and take a picture.
Yes.
You guys look good, eyes open.
You know, I have some citizen communication, but I don't have any cards yet.
We have one more presentation first, actually. There's even more employee recognition. Next, we have the Department of Transportation and Development Outstanding Customer Service Awards presentation. We have Dan Chandler from County Administration with Cheryl Bell from Transportation and Development.
Good morning, Dan Chandler, Assistant County Administrator. You know, you just recognized individual performance, but you know, none of us really get anything done alone here in the county, and it takes teams and it takes teamwork. Over the past six years, since the introduction of Performance Clackamas, there's really been a sharper focus on customer service and satisfaction in the county. And again, we only accomplish that working together in teams. So we're here this morning to recognize a team, a team and six teams that form a team together. And the customers that these teams serve, you know, many of them are dealing with the largest and most important investments in their lives. And the folks in these teams, they have to fairly apply a set of complicated, sometimes Byzantine rules, many of which the county didn't adopt, they're state rules they've got to apply. And they can't always just say yes. These teams have to help customers navigate between five different sets of those rules, and yet consistently, 90% or more of their customers say that they are happy with the service they received. And every week, a whole bunch of those customers actually use that button device. Last week, I noticed it was 162 to demonstrate that. And that really speaks, just like the words you just gave, to demonstrating and living our core values of service, professionalism, and respect, and the human qualities really of empathy and dignity, and humility that you have to have when you're dealing with customers. So, and it also speaks to the commitment of them and their leaders to breaking down silos and having those six teams work together. And I've witnessed the amount of work and effort and dedication it's taken to do that over the last six or seven years. So we're here this morning to recognize six teams within the Department of Transportation and Development for their outstanding customer service, Building Codes, the Surveyor's Office, Development Engineering, Land Use and Zoning, On-Site Wastewater, and the Customer Information Specialist. And now I'm going to turn this over to Cheryl Bell, the Deputy Director of the Department, to talk further.
Good morning, Board and Dan Chandler. Thank you so much for providing this opportunity to honor our staff. In the opening comments this morning, Chair, that you noted the pride staff take in working for their community, and that exemplifies the staff that we're honoring today. It's their hard work and customer service that brings us here. As Dan noted, being honored today are the staff who have a presence in our front lobby and work directly with our customers. And there's two other teams that should be noted that also contribute to this effort, it's code enforcement and sustainability. And they all work together to provide this customer service that we're celebrating. Land use and permitting and our teams and the livable communities' lines of business, at their core function, is customer service, and it's where staff's expertise, talent, experience, consultation, and work directly supports to the county's main Performance Clackamas goals of ensuring safe, healthy, and secure communities, and growing a vibrant economy. In fiscal year 1819, this team facilitated 328,000 customer interactions, and the results ended up in that happy or not, that happy face button being pushed to give a 95% customer satisfaction rating. And as Dan noted, this is in a regulatory environment where we're enforcing state, local, and federal laws. We're often telling people no, but we're helping them build their dreams, and we're helping them build the buildings and infrastructure and built environment that supports Clackamas County. This work directly creates a safe built environment and fosters economic development. And they create the homes that we live in and the commercial structures that provide jobs for our community. These teams are known for their relatable, friendly, and results-oriented customer service. They are so proud of this Clackamas County brand, and it's an honor to work with them. I'm grateful for staff's commitment to their work and their commitment to customer service, and I really appreciate you taking the time to recognize our teams and all the hard work that they do. Thank you for this opportunity.
Can we have the folks that are here from those teams stand? So I believe the certificates are on the table? I think we'll get a picture? Oh, Cheryl's got them.
So if everybody wants to come up, and then the Commissioners will come down for a photo, grab your certificates.
While you're coming up, I'd like to add that I've, I mean, 95% satisfaction's pretty amazing. And you said how many customers?
That's tracking 328,000 customer interactions for last year. We are tremendously busy.
And I've actually run into customers in the elevator who were in tears, having been, come to the county, and they're telling me that they, all their questions were answered, the county had saved them a fortune, and they were so happy that they had actually reached out to the county for some answers, your department. So let's take a picture.
If you want, you can just squeeze up there, that'd be great. Everyone looks good, eyes open.
Thank you.
I don't respond to emails.
This is Thelma's. I'm Thelma and they want to come up together.
Okay. All right, next we're on to citizen communication. We have Thelma and Grover. Come on up. Oh, she's out in the yard, crutches. Well, thank you for coming, and, because it obviously wasn't easy.
It must be important.
Must be important.
Yep.
Otherwise, I wouldn't be here, three and a half weeks into recovery, so.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning Chair Bernard and fellow Commissioners and your TV audience. My name is Thelma Hagan-Miller. I am a county taxpaying homeowner, resident of the unincorporated area of Clackamas County known as Oak Grove. I was one of the original founding members of the Clackamas County Heritage Council, or CCHC, a founding member and current board member of the Oak Lodge History Detectives, and the 33-year sole proprietor of a tourism industry business known as Slowpoke Tours. However, I am not here today representing any of those organizations. I am before you today to address the Heritage District Proposal that staff has presented to you at several previous recent policy sessions. I want to present an alternative proposal for your consideration. This alternative proposal is based not only on my 33 years of experience working in the heritage and tourism industry, but also on my prior experience of being a solutions manager at the telephone company. I am only going to address a few of the issues that were so thoughtfully presented to you in the previous policy sessions. You were presented with several funding options, including one that was the transient room lodging tax, or TRT, and I'm giving you the code in your written testimony. You were told during the policy session that the transient room tax, or TRT, was not an allowable use of Clackamas County tourism, transportation, whatever, funds, since those funds are dedicated for tourism-related purposes only. I was already working in the tourism industry when the ballot measure, or ordinance, that established the TRT was first presented to the Clackamas County voters. The wording of that ordinance was heavily influenced by the major hoteliers in Clackamas County, and designed to enhance efforts for their promotional benefits. The ordinance levied a 6% tax on lodging facilities. Since this tax was not coming out of the pockets of the naive voters, they bought into this promotional philosophy and passed the ballot measure without question. The ballot measure...
Go ahead.
Thank you. The ballot measure ordinance established a county commissioner-appointed Tourism Development Council, or TDC, weighted towards those hoteliers. The TDC purpose is to oversee the administration of the TRT funds. Interestingly enough, the TDC works from a business plan that has three stated legs to it: recreation tourism, agritourism, and heritage tourism. Yet, you were told during the policy sessions that the TRT was not an allowable use of Clackamas County funds for the Heritage District Proposal, since the TRT funds are dedicated for tourism promotion-related purposes only. Then there is the other name that I did not hear any of you question: tourism and cultural affairs. How did that entity come about, and some of its funding? It was not even mentioned at any of the policy sessions, and it was not in the original ordinance. Now, I'm going to state the real purpose for my appearance today. I am totally against even the notion of going after our property tax funds to form a Heritage District. As Clackamas County property taxpayers, we are already facing several other critical issues, like the metro bond measure to address the homeless situation, and the additional funding for the new courthouse, just to mention a few of those issues. I want you to consider instead placing a reworded TRT ballot measure before the voters, or perhaps pursuing a change in the TRT wording and propose an increase in the transient room tax rate to also have dedicated funds for things like heritage and your beloved fair. I urge you to please discuss the pros and cons of this alternative proposal amongst yourself, the involved staff, the legal department, and the general taxpaying public, who thus far has been left entirely out of this discussion. I would gladly entertain any questions you might have about my suggested alternative proposal and the requested plan of action. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Well, thank you Thelma for bringing us to our, your thoughts to our attention, and I know you've got a long history, you know, I've talked over the years, and you've educated me quite a bit on tourism matters. I'm curious, do you support the concept of the hub itself?
I support the concept, I do not support the funding mechanism.
Okay. I think the one point, I think that you raise is a good one, in that there's some other potential efforts to go out to the voters for property tax bond measures for different various assorted things. And I am concerned, and also the challenge with raising enough money, private money, for promoting the bond measure, which can't be with public dollars, it has to be with private money. You know, I think it was estimated around $50,000, that's a big lift.
Fifty to 100.
Yeah, yeah, exactly right. And that's a lot of money for the private sector to raise. I do know that the last time, excuse me, that I raised this issue, when it was presented here a couple meetings ago, I recall asking the question about why didn't we actually explore that TRT piece? And following that meeting, I got some information, and I think legal counsel might remember as well, that indicated that with state law and some overlying, whether it's state law or regulations, whatever it may be, that we can't redirect the existing TRT, but we can add to it and put criteria such as heritage on there. So that is a means, and I think it would be an easier lift to the voters to look at that as a resource than it would be to go for another property tax measure. I just don't know the, I, staff does not, didn't prepare that, that look, or explore that. I thought that was something that ought to be looked at and see what the potential might be for a penny or two, or whatever it may be, to see as an alternative source, a change to the ordinance that would, again, allow everything that's happening today without any disruption, but just add to it, you know, that would comply with law. So the other issue is the fair, the aspect, and so I'm excited, and I've been, I stated my support for the concept of the hub and the concept of doing and getting funding for that. But we just got some recent polling on another matter that wasn't all so positive when it came to the voters, and I think there's only so much the taxpayers can absorb, especially people that are retired, so this might be an easier lift, and you know, maybe it is worth pursuing, at least a look. I think we, I think we at least responsibly deserve to take a look at it.
Ken.
Thank you. Just need to keep in mind, however we go forward, if we go forward with the TRT, only 30% of an increased TRT could be used for heritage under the current law. What we'll need to know is if you increase it by, you know, 1% or 2%, or whatever percentage, how much does that actually generate in terms of trying to support heritage activities? We don't know the answer to that question yet. But the balance, that other 70%, has to be used on tourism in general. One thing that I hope, I think will be helpful is if the heritage community as a group comes together, because there's always seemed to have been disagreements amongst themselves, and that's not helpful in terms of trying to get this resolved and actually get some funding. actually get some funding. The other thing is, I have asked some people, um, in a, in our rural community, just to talk amongst themselves about the concept of a Heritage District. I want to get feedback from the general public as to what they think about that idea. Um, and finally, with respect to the fair, the current, the current, um, allocation to, to the county fair, um, is about four hundred and, this year, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. It originally started at about two hundred and fifty when this was passed, um, and it's gone up incrementally on the basis of, um, I think, a, a general CPI. So, they are getting some funds. They're also doing their master plan, and they're looking at, um, how they can go forward funding a major new building because of the old one that fell down. And back of the napkin numbers, right now, um, they can't carry that debt, so they're going to have to figure out some sort of income, uh, in, increase over what they're currently getting in order to carry the debt that it would take to build a multipurpose building. So, we are looking at all the alternatives, but it's, um, it's not an easy lift, and you're right, as far as the, a lot of taxpayers are, you know, don't want to see anything else on their property taxes, and I get it. I'm not sure how we'll go forward, but I'm sensitive to that concept.
And I, I happen to agree with all that's been said. I think property taxes are overburdened. Uh, it's also nice to think that somebody else would pay the tax, uh, you know, our visitors. Um, and, uh, I know somebody in, who used to be in this industry, and, um, there is, um, uh, I, I think putting something on the ballot which would either change or add is a good idea, and it's something we should talk about. Paul.
I just want to, just, um, uh, not respond, but just ask Commissioner Humberson if, uh, he would agree that, uh, and maybe even Jim, you too, as well, agree that we probably, we should at least explore this. I think we have responsibly to explore it, as, as a revenue source.
No, until, we need to know what the, I mean, we need to know what, what a, any given percentage increase would generate in terms of the thirty percent that actually would be available to use for heritage, for, you know. You know, I may be off on that now that I'm thinking about it. Um, I think it was thirty percent could be used for any other purpose, and seventy percent had to go to, to, um, tourism. I think that's what the actual losses is.
That's what you said.
Yeah. Well, I, I would just add that, um, if my understanding is correct, I think Portland's TRT percentages are, are taxed is significantly higher than ours.
Eighteen percent.
So, so we have a lot of, we have a lot of room and still remain competitive, so we ought to figure out what that potential of, of income would be.
Well, the other thing to keep in mind is most of it gets generated from the I-5 corridor, and we've had discussions with people up on the mountain about fair share and all of that, but the reality is, the, the vast majority of the funding, uh, for TRT for Clackamas County is, is generated on that I-5 corridor, it, because they don't have enough hotels and that sort of thing in Cambie, where the fair is, or on the mountain where those activities take place, so.
Yeah, I think the first hotel in more than a decade is being built in Clackamas County now, or is planned.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, we, we, we need more hotels. Martha?
So, I would be really supportive of looking at that as well. Um, my big concern is with the Museum of the Oregon Territory. It's a repository of, you know, the San Francisco Platte. It's kind of the, the place where any significant piece of our history is stored, and my concern is that I believe, I'm, I'm going to look at Gary here, I don't know if he knows either, that we own the land, but not the building, and it's a fantastic overview of the falls. And, um, you know, as we work very diligently on the redevelopment of the Legacy Project, I would hate to see that become a stranded asset, because it's actually got a lot of potential. Um, and again, that third floor is a duel for people to, you know, actually see the falls and actually have a view of that redevelopment. So I've been struggling with, okay, how do we get the dollars to make sure that museum and then the End of the Oregon Trail Museum and some of our other smaller folks' museums remain?
And I would like to address Mr. Humberson's one question, or statement that he made, which is to bring the, uh, heritage community and the tourism community on board. Um, you've already been visited at, um, public meetings here by three of the entities that I suggested that they come talk to you. I wanted to keep this, they, they kind of set the stage for me to come in and talk about the funding mechanism. They, the three people, Lisa Bentley and, um, Gail Yazalino came, and Denise McGriff came. They are all part of the Heritage, the CCHC that I also belong to, and, um, at my suggestion at a meeting over a month ago was why they came before you, to kind of set the stage for my to come in and suggest a different funding mechanism. So, as far as the support for the whole thing, I'm working on them and with them.
Good. And hoteliers will, we will need them.
And the hoteliers. I very much work with the hoteliers. That's my industry, and I do definitely have influence over a lot of them.
Good. All right, Grover.
Good morning. Um, so, uh, my name is Grover Jeffrey Bornfeld. I'm a twenty-eight-year resident of Jennings Lodge, and I'm here to actually, um, again, cheer on the progress that you all have been making since I've become home and active in our community, and that is your performance, Clackamas. The part about building public trust through good government, I, just listening to this conversation here, there are many things to look at, and how do we solve this Rubik's Cube, et cetera, and what I do appreciate is, in my opinion, a significant shift in the willingness to look at the broader community's awareness and inclusion in helping to solve those things, because in the end, we end up paying for most of it. So I, we, things turned out so much better if we were involved in, and I'll use, um, I didn't plan on doing this, but I want to use the, uh, work, uh, that you supported in, um, libraries, an example. So, the Library District Advisory Committee didn't used to follow what the ballot measure said, and now it does, and we do some, we have spirited conversations, but I want you to know, with all parties represented, we come up with solutions that never would have come up or come out, and they're supportable because they were reached by the stakeholders. So, I really want to support that. But I also want to support y'all. I appreciated seeing you, uh, last week, I think it was, at the Vietnam Veteran Commemorative Event. Um, I am one, and I appreciated your support, and that's, that's part of the laundry list, the thing about the library. I do appreciate how you are supporting that, in fact, half the population of Clackamas County live in unincorporated, and we have to keep that present, because the standard mechanism, we don't have all that paid representation that cities and whatnot have, and so, we get left out, and I, again, that was one of those spirited conversations that ended up, as we're moving forward to this new task force, to look at the viability and support of libraries going forth. It's going to have adequate representation in that. But I also want to support and acknowledge, um, parks, because we've, I've seen you all in a lot of meetings in not-too-distant past, and it really is about supporting that the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District is a district that's made up of a, a defined geographic area, and that's what the voters voted for, and I want to read just one quick line from what the voters voted for twenty-eight years ago. It says, "The district will serve unincorporated areas," and then it defines all that, and then it says, "including the city of Milwaukee." But it defined all the unincorporated areas that it's to serve, and that's what I very much want to appreciate, your recent focus on realigning how the representation works. And so I want to keep supporting that moving forward. And I think that's, the only other thing I just wanted really remind in that particular area, it still is, two-thirds of the members of the North Clackamas Parks and Rec are unincorporated.
Yep.
And ninety million dollars have been paid by those unincorporated people, which represents seventy-three percent of the tax dollars that have come in. So it, it needs better representation, and thank you in that direction. So, my favorite quote, if you get an email from me, it says at the bottom that "the price of liberty is eternal vigilance," and I'm here representing that, and I really want to let you know how much I appreciate your repeated willingness to look at what serves us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I had one last thing. I, I want to acknowledge the for, I don't know if it's PGA or y'all, but this is a nice upgrade, and your website's a nice upgrade, so thank you as far as giving feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, uh...
Questions?
Oh, no. Any questions?
Thank you.
I, I just want to thank you for thanking us, because sometimes it can kind of be a little thankless job, and it's nice to have folks come up, "Hey, guys, you're doing something right." So thank you a lot for that. I really appreciate it.
I...
I love the job, you know, I just love what we do.
Yep.
But, um, it's nice to have somebody be appreciative, so.
I, I appreciate the direction we're going and the work we've been doing together, so thank you.
It's one of the best commissions I've ever worked with, I have to admit, so.
Thanks.
Not that that means anything, but I feel like it.
I'll give you a minute to, uh, help Thelma.
I'll just wheel around. Thelma, we staying?
No, I'm staying.
She have knee surgery.
She fell and broke her pelvis.
Yeah.
She's got a self-heal.
All right, Les.
Good morning. Les Poole, Gladstone. Twenty-two years in Oak Grove. In two thousand and seven, um, I'm, I'm a history buff, and I knew Thelma and some others, and I decided that I would form an organization, and I actually registered the name and began working on the Oak Lodge Historical Society, because that whole area, uh, is pretty incredible, and, uh, a lot of our roots started there. And, um, I was real busy, and the next thing I knew, all of a sudden, there was the Oak Lodge History Detectives, and I thought, somebody beat me to it, and I thought, I'll bet Thelma was involved, and I found out she was. And, and, so I never moved forward with that, but I'm grateful for their efforts. And obviously, there's a theme here every week, and it's something I talk about, and it just played out again, and that is, that is really about money and property taxes, and what are we getting for our money? And maybe someone else will help pay for something. Um, and, and it creates a, a need for a discussion like this, and it's good we have the forum here. I've worked really hard, I would have to say I've worked harder than anyone, to ensure that we have dialogue here rather than dismissal. It's really important, and sometimes, you know, it's a, it's not a forgiving job that you have. Sometimes it's not real forgiving out here either, but, uh, my point is that when the public is involved and aware, regardless of a decision or an outcome, typically, whatever that outcome is, people are more inclined to be able to live with it, and you don't hear that recurring theme that, "We didn't know that was going on. We didn't know what was happening. No one told me we were going to have a vehicle registration fee or anything else." Those kind of things, well, that, that, that last letter and spirit is trust, and trust is the first thing that goes away when the public doesn't feel involved. So I, I certainly appreciate that we've just had a dialogue here that went beyond the three minutes, and, uh, even in recent weeks, there's been a lot of discussion about Damascus. And as a stakeholder out there, um, there's a lot that I could say that I haven't. Um, you're probably aware that I'm very troubled about how the mayor was treated by the chair here recently. That's really an understatement. But aside from that, through all of it, there was dialogue, and, and the mayor didn't leave, and the public didn't leave, so hot under the collar that when they came back next week, there was no way we were going to be communicating. So I know sometimes it's tough, uh, to, um, not feel like, "Man, what are we doing here? We need to move on." And I would encourage, I would really strongly encourage that we see more discussion items and more promotion of public discussion items on the agenda. Um, when you have a dis, public discussion and it's noticed and folks show up, that's real participation. When there's a discussion item on the agenda and no one's here, if I were in your shoes, I would be troubled by that. I would be troubled by that. So, let's try to do more discussion items, more public involvement, and let's make sure that folks know what's going on, whether it's good news or bad. I'll see you at the fair.
Thank you. Uh, next item is a public hearing.
Yes, Commissioners, a public hearing, which is a second reading of ordinance number zero-six dash two-zero-one-nine, amending chapter eight, section eight-point-zero-seven, alarm permit. Julie Rush from the Sheriff's Office will present.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is, once again, Julie Rush. I'm the Alarm Ordinance Coordinator with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. The purpose of the alarm ordinance is to reduce the number of false alarms from private alarm systems by requiring alarm users and alarm businesses to assume increased responsibility for maintaining the mechanical reliability and the proper use of their alarm systems. Having a monitored alarm system is a personal choice and is generally a contracted agreement between an alarm business and its customers. It is the only for-profit private sector industry which bases its business model on response by taxpayer-supported services. Those who don't have an alarm system derive no benefit from a deputy responding to a false alarm, but actually lose access to public safety resources they would have had available if a deputy had not been diverted to respond to a false alarm. The proposed ordinance revision of the Clackamas County Alarm Ordinance was needed to account for the following: enforcement limitations of the existing alarm ordinance, non-compliance of alarm users, failure of some alarm businesses to voluntarily adopt best practices to assist with false alarm reduction, new security system components and monitoring technology, and increased use and availability of self-installed security systems and systems alarm users are monitoring themselves. In Clackamas County, the city of Cambie and Malala have recently completed alarm ordinance rewrites. The city of Portland has also adopted a new ordinance. The proposed ordinance revision before you today is very much in line with neighboring and local jurisdictions and encompasses best enforcement practices and industry standards. Ultimately, the end goal is not to be punitive, but to gain compliance and to decrease or eliminate false alarm calls. This enables deputies to respond to actual crimes and emergencies when they arise and protects the emergency response capabilities of Clackamas County from misuse. I would request the Board of County Commissioners adopt the revised ordinance and that it repeal and replace chapter eight oh-seven with the revision. Um, I would be happy to address any questions you might have, and thank you for your time.
So I, I have a question. Somebody has to come into the county to, uh, apply or online to get a light, uh, permit, correct?
Correct.
So is there educational material?
Absolutely.
Because I, you know, I think, you know, alarms go off and you wonder what they were. I remember an employee got balloons and the furnace turned on, the alarm went off. That happened three times before we realized what it was, then it was a hundred-dollar fine. So some educational material would be helpful, so.
Absolutely.
Great. Um, so do any commissioners, uh, wish, any clarifying questions?
No, I will say that when, uh, as my past experience with the alarm is that when you had an alarm, um, you got a letter in the mail after that alarm indicating that, you know, this is X offense or whatnot, or, not offense, but, you know, a warning, and then, so I remember getting letters, um, for, um, warning me on a false alarm at my business, so. Still do that?
Absolutely. Every time.
Yep.
Along with educational materials.
But when they happen one after the other, every ten minutes, and the police keep coming, there's no time for a letter. All right, so, uh, open the public hearing, ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter? Go ahead.
Well, guess who spent many years in the alarm and ADA upgrade and fire monitoring world? I did. And, uh, in the nineties, um, I did a lot of alarm layouts, and wireless was coming in, the reliability was horrible. And so, I agree with the, the need for education, especially since I can look on TV and I can buy a little magic box and somehow plug it in, and for twenty bucks a month, I'm safe, secure, there's no problems, it's going to work like, just like a champ. And so there's an, there's a feeling out there that, um, these are real simple, like my cellphone, wow, look how neat this is, it's not going to be a problem. And of course, then they lock the door and they leave the dog in there running around, and the alarm thinks the dog is a person. So... thinks the dog is a person. So, I think it's really critical that we have an educational component to this. I've always been a big promoter—ponent of that. I can assure you that when we were doing alarms, I got a lot of customer acceptance by having a false alarm guarantee. And this isn't anything that you could impose or I would suggest be imposed, but the company that is installing and providing the alarm equipment can sometimes be doing things that lead to false alarms that are unnecessary. That gets reflected on the homeowner. So, my concern—or my only feeling here is that, you know, how do we get the homeowner to understand what their responsibilities are, no matter who put the alarm in? And what happens when you're having problems and maybe there's an equipment malfunction or the alarm system wasn't laid out right? Because when someone starts to get penalized, and especially if they can't afford to fix it, or they're really on a tight budget—which most of us are—all of a sudden, you're getting more fines, you're in trouble, it becomes a big annoyance, and the reason that you got the alarm was for peace of mind. So, I would add one other thought, and that is, there's a lot of the older alarms that aren't as reliable. Many of them are not monitored. They just have an alarm that screams through the neighborhood for five minutes and shuts off. And so, in terms of this ordinance, I'm not here to object to it, but I would say strongly that enforcement always seems to come with an increase in fines, an increase in punishment. And I'm not—I'm not saying that isn't necessary to control the problem and put wasting resources, but I know that we have a tendency to culturally in government think, "Well, if we increase the fine, people will behave differently." Well, in this situation, I don't see that as being viable. And I would close by saying, the representative here was—I'm sorry, I can't remember your name—but was spot-on in pointing out that these alarms—this is the only situation where a for-profit company is, you know, working with government or has a—really, a taxpayer-paid response, which is the police. And that's true. But we're talking about public safety. It's a unique situation, and I would just encourage you to be careful about how this is enforced and punished and what the letters look like when you send a letter out to someone. And keep in mind that if you've got someone who's really on a fixed income or something, or they're in an area where there's a lot of crime going on, and they're having false alarms, and you're telling them to shut that thing off, or we're going to come and pay—charge you a fine. This is what plays out on the streets, so I'm giving you kind of a broad message here, a lot to think about, but at the same time, I'm not here speaking out against the ordinance. Thank you.
And it's how many alarms before you have a fee, a fine?
You get one every permit cycle, and then it's—the fines start after the second.
Okay.
So—and I'm happy to address the issue of the education as well as the—some statistics showing—the Security Industry Alarm Coalition reported statistics showing that when an ordinance is well enforced and managed properly, roughly eighty-five percent of permitted alarm users will not have an alarm dispatch in any given year. The next eight to ten percent will have only one dispatch—dispatch, excuse me. Statistics also show that a very small percentage of systems cause the majority of dispatches, and that increased fines and suspension of service if issues go uncorrected is both effective and a reasonable solution. And also, with any fee or fine imposed, we do have the option to waive all or part of a fee of a fine due to extenuating circumstances, such as whether it's a financial inability to pay, or if the alarm user has taken corrective action to eliminate the cause of those false alarms. Also, with the new ordinance, we are adopting an alarm school. So, that gives the user the option to do—and take an online test, basically, and learn a little bit more about how to prevent false alarms, and they are able to—we will waive that false alarm. So.
All right, Paul.
Yeah, I just wanted to just clarify for anyone that's in the audience or watching that is the—you know, granted, we approve the ordinance. It's been embedded in the county code, but primarily, it's ran by the sheriff's office and the sheriff's office, the independently-elected officials. So, a lot of the administration of this is done under the sheriff's office and not the county commission or the county administration.
All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
Moved in second that we read the ordinance by title only. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. I'd ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Okay. This is ordinance number 06-2019, an ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 8.07, Alarm Permit Ordinance of the Clackamas County Code.
Thank you. And I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt ordinance number 06-2019, amending Chapter 8, Business Regulations, Section 8.07, Alarm Permit.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt ordinance number 06-2019, amending Chapter 8 of the Business Regulations, Section 8.07, Alarm Permit. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you for your work.
Thank you for your time.
And the next item is the Consent Agenda. I'd ask the clerk to read the Consent Agenda by title only.
Okay.
Just read the Consent Agenda.
The Consent Agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental subrecipient agreement with the city of Lake Oswego, Lake Oswego Adult Community Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of a local grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services to provide evidence-based parenting education classes. Approval of Amendment Number 6 to Agreement Number 7462 to a revenue agreement with Oregon Health Authority for pharmacist services to members enrolled in the Oregon Health Plan. Approval of Agreement Number 9119 to a revenue agreement with Oregon Health Authority to reproductive health services to members enrolled in Screenwise program. Approval of a subrecipient professional services agreement with Cascade AIDS Project for HIV testing and counseling services. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, a board order adopting the vacation of a portion of Hayskin Mill Road. Approval to accept award for the regional travel option grant for Safe Routes to School Program Coordinator. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a research service agreement with the University of Oregon Department of Architecture as part of the U.S. Forest Department Wood and Innovation Grant. Under Human Resources, approval of Amendment Number 1 between Clackamas County, Clackamas County Housing Authority, and Voya Retirement Insurance and Voya Financial Partners. Under the Juvenile Department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Youth Authority, for juvenile crime prevention basic services and diversion services for secure detention beds. Approval of Amendment Number 4 to the intergovernmental agreement with Metro for litter pickup near Metro South Transfer Station. Approval of a personal services contract with Latino Network to provide community-based diversion services. Under Technology Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and the city of Sandy to deliver internet services to U.S. Forest Service Roads 29, 31, 35, 35A, and 35B as part of the Kwanis ISP project. And under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of a River Health Stewardship Grant Agreement with Water Environment Services for funding to support water education projects. Under the Development Agency, approval of an assignment and sound amendment to the disposition agreement with Clackamas Crossing LLC. And Water Environment Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Gladstone and Oregon City for the Water Environment Services Good Neighbor Fund. That concludes today's Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mary. Do any Commissioners wish to remove or pull an item from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. The next item is County Administrator Updates.
Yes, Commissioners, I'd like to share with you some good news happening here at Clackamas County. First, and you're all aware of this, that one of our county residents, a ninety-five-year-young man named Lee, asked for donations for our Veterans Village in lieu of birthday gifts this year for his ninety-fifth birthday. He came into our office last week and personally handed a check for three hundred and eighty dollars that he collected and gave it all to our vets' village. So, I want to publicly thank Lee for his generous and selfless act to help others. And of course, our Veterans Village project has been very effective, so far helping eight homeless veterans transition into secure housing. So, we will do more to help honor Lee, but I just wanted to recognize him publicly and thank him for that amazing contribution he made. Second, I want to recognize the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, NCPRD, and some feedback that they received from a mother of a boy who's participating in a basketball camp called Super Hoopers. The mother, Julie, wrote, "Just a little feedback on this week's Super Hoopers program. The coaching staff is fantastic. My son had some trepidation prior to starting the camp and wasn't sure if he wanted to even attend. I made him go on day one with the promise that if he was having a bad time, he didn't have to go back. Well, day two comes, and he's dressed early and wants to bring his own ball from home. Then he starts showing me all the skills he's learning. It's been up, up, up from there. Thanks again for such a wonderful coaching team. He's gained so much confidence, and I really appreciate all they've—all they've done. As a parent, it's priceless." So, thank you to Julie for submitting that feedback and our staff at NCPRD for their work organizing these great programs in our community. Finally, I'd like to show you a quick video. This is from the sheriff's office, and it's recognizing our outstanding sheriff's deputies for when they go beyond the call of duty, which they do consistently, and how they helped a member of our community who needed some help. So, if you'll look at your screens, please, we have this short, one-minute video to share.
Hey, I know you follow us on social media, so I'm sure you saw our story about Ron. It was a selfless moment. It was a great story, and the outpouring of support for the community was amazing. But there's a little bit of a hiccup.
Unfortunately, today, we came into work and learned that his bike was having some problems. We weren't going to let the bike that we got for him be, again, the reason he couldn't get to work. So, we went and picked him up in Portland, figured out what was going on, took him here to Fred Meyer's.
As it turned out, the bicycle we bought Ron was defective, and he couldn't ride it. The deputies returned to Fred Meyer with Ron, but when they got there, they learned there were no bicycles to exchange for of that same model. When Fred Meyer heard about his story, without hesitation, they offered to exchange it for an upgrade without charge.
For a company like Fred Meyer to step in without hesitation was just phenomenal. We were able to give him a good bike, a good lock, and a helmet.
Your sheriff department's done. Hook me up. I'm golden now because of you guys.
So, thank you to our amazing sheriff's deputies and Fred Meyer, a local company that does good for our community. That's my report today, Commissioners.
I have one question. Does Julie mention where she's from?
She does not, but the camp was at Mount Scott, so I assume in—
Happy Valley.
—the Valley area of our county.
I was just wondering. All right. First up is Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, well, it's been a really busy week this week. Many of you know, I had my grandchildren out from England, and I had forgotten what having small children around the house, how chaotic things can get. There are a lot of Cheerios and kind of buried in the rug and those little Cheez-It kind of fish things, you know, that they eat all the time. But it was fantastic. They're beautiful kids. They're growing up so well, and they continue to correct my American accent on a regular basis. So, we're working on understanding each other. And also, it was a really busy week. I went out with Counselor Teresa Koloff of Lake Oswego to take a look at some property in Lake Oswego that they may start to consider for some affordable housing. It was a really good, really beautiful site, and I want to thank our H3S staff for coming along with that, Jill in particular. So, you know, in the next three to five years, you know, with some of that Metro bond money and other help, we have one of the bigger cities in our county starting to—we hope—step up to the plate with meeting goal ten. So, that was really good. With my fellow Commissioner, Chair Bernard, I attended the Mount Hood Stakeholders Forum with Senator Ron Wyden and Representative Earl Blumenauer, talking about wilderness areas. And I know, Jim, you can fill us in a little more with that. What I was really grateful for is that Jeff Constan, who basically manages the—you know, the huge hotel there, Timberline, they now have a Mary Gutreau Room, named after Mary because of all the work she's done in natural resources in the area. So, Mary, I hope you get to see this. Every time I go up there, I'll be sure to, you know, think of you when—you know, because I thought that was such a gracious, very gracious thing to do. We also—I think all of us actually attended the Clackamas County Prosperity Kickoff at the Oregon City Library. These are the areas that we have identified in the county, the communities that we want to help give a hand up to. We've identified areas of poverty. So, we've worked with—beginning to work with community members of these identified communities. I know Cambie was one, Estacada, I think areas around Milwaukee, as well as how they can really help their communities grow and prosper. So, that was really good to do. I also met with our lobby staff here, you know, Chris Lyon and folks from Loma County. We had a good talk about how we can better coordinate our lobbying efforts with—at the legislature—with the Association of Oregon Counties. They gave me a lot of feedback. We are going to have an association retreat here in Clackamas County, the 11th and the 12th, and I am trying to incorporate some of their suggestions into this, one being that, for example, our common interest in the community justice system and that how—that's something we all have in common, that quite frankly is not controversial or in alignment. And those are the kinds of things, as a team, we should be concentrating on as an association and with the help of our lobbyists. I did help a constituent from Cambie this week because it was an unusual issue where we have a piece of a county road on Maple Street that is becoming more and more busy, and there's going to be development down that street, and the road is a county-owned road. And I did suggest to them with the vehicle registration fee that part of those dollars will go to the cities, and we're encouraging them to take those roads and fix them. It is actually a very dangerous situation. The traffic has increased. They've had a lot of urban development, and it's just interesting that we got this one piece of county road that is becoming an issue. So, we'll probably hear more about that. And Mike Benzner was very helpful and met with them as well, so hopefully, we'll come up with a solution. And I also had a great conversation with our workforce executive director, Bridget Daisy, who is very, very interested in universal childcare, because one of the issues that we're finding in our workforce is the increased expense of childcare and how families manage, you know, to come up with the dollars to do that, and is there—are there things we can do in the county? We do have a restricted budget this year, so I imagine anything of that nature would have to—we probably come from other sources of funding, but I think it's worth, you know, taking a look at to see what might be out there. And I know Commissioner Bernard, we've talked about having childcare on our campus here, too, but—so, that's still being worked on. And last night, I had a lovely party with women colleagues who are local elected officials at my house. And if you take a look on Facebook, there's a great photo that Commissioner Fisher, who helped me host, took of all of us that were there, Lake Oswego, Toowallatin, Milwaukee. And yes, gentlemen, we did talk about you, but I'll tell you what we talked about when we were here. We are—we actually love working with you, I have to say. That's true. Okay, Mary, do I do the word first? Word first, okay. The word of the week is recognition, the action of recognizing the state of being recognized, special notice or attention, the sensing and encoding of printed or written data by a machine. Famous quote, "Don't worry when you are not recognized, but strive to be worthy of recognition," Abraham Lincoln. Abraham Lincoln. Okay, arts and culture in the county, Oregon City Festival of the Arts. I'll be heading out there this weekend at the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. Sixty artist booths, all-day entertainment on two stages, local food trucks, and emerging artists exhibit. Children's hands-on art projects and a silent auction makes this an event not to be missed. Free and fun for the whole family. I'm going to plan on stopping by to that one, it sounds like fun. And also, West Lynn Summer Concerts, Music in the Park, Thursday, August eighth, six thirty to eight thirty P.M. at the Tanner Creek Park. A perfect opportunity to kick off your shoes and relax into the sound of Stump City Soul, a collection of lifelong musicians from the Pacific Northwest with a passion for the solid gold hits of the nineteen-sixties and seventies. Don't forget to check out the websites of Lakewood Theater and Clackamas Commute Repertory Theater. They are continuing to put on some fantastic plays during the summer months. So, for more information, please visit the Arts Alliance website at clackamasartsalliance.org.
Thank you. Paul?
Great, I was just hearing the conversation that, or sharing the, the story about the Super Hooper, Super Hoopers. I remember my kids, both my kids were mini hoopers, so they had participated in the Parks District in a building that is no longer there, actually. It's now, it's a, now it's a whole new building, the college facility over there where the, Alpha Harmony. Had a little gymnasium inside there, yeah, yeah. And I started thinking about kids, you know, it always brightens your day, and I was flashing back to last Saturday when I was, participated in the Gladstone Parade, and think about all the parades in this time of year. And on Tuesday, we're going to have our Kitty Capers Parade, in which the BCC walks down the streets of Cambie, and, so that's always a lot of fun, but it's always nice to have something to smile about, and kids just bring a certain joy, it's just priceless. What I want to talk about today was the census, and a couple of weeks ago, I spoke to you all briefly about the upcoming 2020 U.S. Census, and I'm sure most are aware that in 2020, the federal government will be conducting its census population count for all residents. I've been asked to help conduct outreach for the county on this effort, and I will be encouraging participation and involvement for all of us. One big fact that I shared last time was the census data is utilized for the redrawing of congressional maps. Oregon is expected to gain one seat in the House of Representatives due to the growth and based on the expected census count. The census is only conducted every ten years, and so this week I wanted to share some of the Clackamas County Census facts from 2010, nine years ago. Back in 2010, Clackamas County had three cities with more than twenty-five thousand residents, Lake Oswego, Oregon City, and West Lynn. I wonder which other cities will cross that line. Lake Oswego was the county's most populous city with thirty-six thousand in 2010. Could be now, I think the last, I understand, were thirty-eight thousand, but Oregon City's approaching that number, if not surpassed it. Barlow, the county's smallest city, had just a hundred and thirty-five people in 2010. And when the Clackamas County Courthouse was built in nineteen thirty-eight, the county population was a bit, bit upwards of fifty thousand people, and now we're four hundred and sixteen, four hundred and eighteen, as I understand it. So we've grown significantly, eight times that number. If you'd like to learn more about the 2020 Census, including how to apply to work as an employee of the Census Bureau during the 2020 count, information is available at the county website or at 2020census.gov. And that's what I have for today.
Great. Ken?
Thank you. Well, it's a busy week in the summer. Have been to a number of car shows over the last week, which gives me a great opportunity to talk to people about what the county does and why we make some of the decisions we make and answer questions. So I was at the Gladstone Car Show last Sunday, and also on Saturday, the Estacada Car Show. And I encourage my colleagues to attend those, besides the fact that you get a chance to look at some great-looking cars, you also get a chance to talk to a lot of folks, particularly in our rural areas oftentimes. I had my ninth ride-along with the Gladstone Police Department last week, finding, again, very good cooperation with our Sheriff's Department. Also, pretty much common problems in all of our cities and in our unincorporated area. Very professional, very competent people. There was a number of incidents on this last ride-along that occurred. One was at Muldrum Park at night. The deputies handled it very effectively, very professionally, nobody got hurt. They were very careful about their own personal safety and the, and the tactics that they used, but the important thing was, is that they were able to deal with the, the citizens that were having some issues and problems without anybody getting hurt. I went to the rodeo kickoff, get-together with the rodeo committee at the fair the other day. Everybody's excited about the fair coming up, and some of us are particularly excited about the rodeo, so. Having done a little saddle bronc when I was about eighteen years old, that's, that's the event I'm looking forward to seeing on Saturday night when we do ticket-taking. Went to the Clackamas Service Center Ice Cream Social to celebrate their one-year anniversary of the rebuilding of their facility, and found out that they have been serving people with needs for forty-six years. They are to be commended for the service that they have provided to those that are less fortunate than the rest of us. Commissioner Bernard and I attended the Tour of the Confluence Reconnection Project on the Sandy River, up on the mountain. Lot of work being done there to manage the river in, in a more natural way and, and reinstall habitat, and thank you to our Parks Department. In our last harvest, we donated something in the excess of three hundred logs and root balls for the stream restoration project, which will be habitat for, for salmon and other species. I did meet a young woman there who works for the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board. Interestingly enough, we may have missed an opportunity to get a little state funding for our Carley Creek Project, so I've sent the information to Greg Geist at Wes, suggested that he have a con, call her, have her see the Carley Creek Project, and then talk to her about subsequent projects. We might be able to get a little financial assistance on subsequent watershed improvement projects, because that's what they do. And last but not least, I think we were all at the Clackamas Community Prosperity Collaborative Kickoff the other day at the Oregon City Library. And just as a reminder to folks, what that is, is we took a look at our social services programs where we were kind of a mile wide and an inch deep on a lot of the things that we were doing, and said, "Why don't we take a look at some very specific areas that could use these resources and concentrate them on those very specific areas for prosperity in those communities, and instead of a mile wide and an inch deep, you know, a quarter mile wide and three feet deep, and see if we can get a different and better results?" The nice thing about that concept is that really are spending the same money we would have spent helping people in any case, and worst-case scenario is we break even, so to speak, in terms of, we may not help any more than we've already helped, but maybe we'll do better, and it's an opportunity to find out if a different approach will give us better results. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
You know.
Oh, I have the dog. That's right. Going to the dogs. Former space adventurer Mercury is looking down for an earthly dwelling to call his own. Mercury is an eleven-year-old Border Collie mix, whose days of intergalactic travel are over, so he finds himself looking for a retirement home worthy of a former adventurer. He's looking for a few particular things in his new earthly dwelling. Regular walks around the neighborhood to stretch his legs and say hello to new friends. A cozy bed to curl up on for dreaming of his former intergalactic travel. Toys to play with. A humanoid friend to love him and rub his earthbound belly. If you have a yard, he'll love that too. Grass is great, and it was hard to come by on his adventures through the galaxy. If your earthly dwelling sounds like it would be a good fit for him, please blast off to the shelter and ask to meet me today. For more information about Mercury or other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at five oh three, six five five, eight six two eight, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. And who was the creative writer for that one?
Dog Services Team.
Dog Services Team. Well, that was pretty creative on their part. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So as Commissioner Schrader mentioned, we went to Mount Hood where Senator Wyden and Representative Earl Blumenauer were speaking, and a lot of the discussion is, is about the mountain we love too much. You know, the impact on trails and the mountain because people love it so much, and how we're going to control that, and also transportation and parking up at Mount Hood. You know, there isn't that much parking up at Timberline Lodge, and so, you know, a government camp is worried it's going to be the parking lot of, of Timberline Lodge, as well as Mount Hood Meadows. They don't have any housing over there, so there is a, an opportunity to talk about, you know, what we can do to address those concerns. One is, you know, we already have a bus system up there that could use enhancement. The other is, you know, there's discussion, there's a property exchange that someday will actually occur in almost twenty, is it, two thou, yeah, it's been ten years. Ten years, I think it's two thousand nine, they mentioned. I thought it'd been older than that. That is working its way through with the Forest Service, which will provide additional housing and could have a, an impact, certainly will have an impact on the area. And then, like Ken mentioned, we went down to the Sandy River work we're doing, and what's important to note there is that also one of the people there was the Portland Water Bureau. You know, the Sandy River is important to Portland, they had, were investing in this project, which originally started out to be six million, and they got it down to one point five, and they're actually at a million now, because of not only the contributions that Clackamas County contributed, but the fact that up the road from there is a gravel company, and the biggest cost for these projects is disposal of what they take out. And the gravel company, just being not very far from there, has offered to take the gravel. You know, it's, it's, it's like gold, but if you have to transport it, you know, to Portland, it's, it's a big deal, and when there's a company not, I don't think it's a mile away, will come and get that gravel, that's a great deal. So, and Earl, Representative Blumenauer, came down to that one, and, so, the fair is always a great opportunity to connect with our citizens. We will be there, and we actually are having a business meeting that day. Which slide goes up first?
Business meeting upstairs.
Okay. So, at the fair on Thursday, August fifteenth, from ten a.m., at ten a.m. will be our business meeting, we'll have it there. If you get there before ten a.m., you get in free. So, come early, and it's always a fun event. We get to look at those, you know, people bring up little animals, or sometimes bigger animals, and we get to meet them and hear about what they do, 4-H. The fair actually starts August thirteenth to the seventeenth. It kind of opens with what you mentioned, a parade, which we always attend, and we go down and, and open the event with our, our business meeting. So, the August thirteenth to the seventeenth, you can visit, get more information at, on the web at www.clackamas.us/fair. It's the hundred and thirteenth anniversary of the Clackamas County Fair, and at the same location, and again, August thirteenth to seventeenth. Clackamas County Fair and Events Center hosts a lot of great events. I've been going there since I was a little kid, and so, take advantage of this opportunity to learn about what 4-H offers and what the county offers, and visit all the animals on display. I, I was saying to somebody one day that I started doing cattle, and I bought two of them, and I had never stood next to a cattle, a cow, until I bought them, and I, I thought, "Man, they're big." But, this is an opportunity, yeah. Well, I never stand next to them at the fair either, but, so, go to the fair, and we hope to see you there, and thank you very much, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.